Stand for the invitation of the legislative. All right, Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here today and to all have our health and be safe and please guide us as we make decisions today for the future of the college and continue to keep us safe and strong in mind as we move forward with the Agenda to Best Service Students. Amen?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice.
Okay, approval of the agenda in minutes. Consideration approval of the agenda.
I'm looking for the agenda.
Is our second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Now on to the minutes for the April board meetings, consideration and approval. There, I must approve the eighty minutes.
So moved.
And your second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
All right.
All right, considerations of college funding for report.
If you start on page seven of your workbooks, you can look at our current fiscal year as of March thirty first compared to the previous year at the same time. You see on our revenue side on that first page, behind where we were last year, you've seen that in previous months, we did budget for reduction in enrollment as a primary driver in those categories. And then, of course, our state appropriations is actually, as of March, okay, but we're going to see that change when we look at the budget picture. On the next page of page eight, you see our expenses. Our expenses are about even or even in some category, sorry, it's a little bit ahead, but we have operating expenses a little bit behind last year, so kind of didn't help. And then on page nine, you see the revenues minus expenses. We're just a little bit behind where we were last year, so again, a very similar picture of what you've seen in previous months. Following that then, if you look at page twelve, we look at April, these are preliminary April numbers, but looking at budget to actual, on the revenue side, you see actually tuition and fees, we're actually doing pretty good there. We've got ninety-five percent of that budget in net. Of course, in April, we still have both, we have summer and fall registration open, a portion of summer accounts towards this fiscal year, so it will help close some of that gap. Then, as I mentioned earlier, on the governmental appropriations, we still have about a million dollars to go on that. We do know that the governor has already withheld a month's worth of that, which is about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And remains to be seen whether or not we see further withholds before the end of the fiscal year. So that's a category we need to watch. On the bottom half of that page, looking at expenses, looking around at the eighty-three, this is eighty-three percent for the fiscal year is going through April, you see most of those categories are pretty much right on target as we would expect them to be, so we're in pretty good shape there. Following that then, on page fourteen, looking at our capital budget, very similar to what you've seen in previous months, no major changes there, just that those projects are continuing to progress and you'll know more about those construction projects in the president's report, I'm sure. And then on page seventeen, looking at our cash position, so looking at the pie graph there, you can see we're just at fifteen point eight million dollars total in cash as of May the fifth, of not quite half of that in unrestricted cash, of course, a portion of that is our restricted agency funds that we just hold in trust. And then, of course, the remainder being our reserve funds, a portion of which related to the trade building donations that we got last year. Following that then, looking at our CDs, we did have, we have some CDs to mature, you can see the details of those on page twenty, some of the CDs that we hold as investments, as well as one of the endowment CDs that we did liquidate and transfer to the endowment trust per the donor's request. Definitely seeing interest rates down. On page twenty-two, we see the bid report, not a whole lot of that going on right there. We did bid out our student refund services and some roof work on the academic resource commons.
Thank you. Charlie, any discussion?
You said the governor withheld over four hundred thousand. That was reassigned to medical field, medical services, and it's gone.
Yes, one month's worth of our appropriations is about four million five thousand dollars.
And we're expecting more?
Potentially.
Any further discussion?
Do we have any idea what we're looking at?
The governor is being unspecific as with numbers. He mentioned today that everyone could expect a high potential for additional withholds without stating what they are. My personal opinion, safe bet, he's going to talk a month to June. Of course, the impact of withholds, the later they are, the bigger the percent felt. It's still one-twelfth, but we're getting down at this point to money that's already obligated, already spent, it's going to come out high if he does go ahead and withhold that. And then, they are beginning very dismal talk about what next year's budget looks like without being either able or willing to answer the question, what percentage are you talking about? So I anticipate we'll know first part of June what the state appropriations for next part of the semester.
They're a bit small coming, but I didn't know.
The, we had a conference call this morning at nine, and it was dismal speech with no specificity.
They expected June, you said?
Yeah.
Maybe some more.
Any further discussion on the financial report?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, business reports.
Yes, I'm good. Want to start off with a construction update on Chris Technology Center expansion. This project is quickly coming to a close. They are in fact roughly ninety-nine percent through with the building phase of the construction. We actually have an occupancy permit for the maintenance building and the fire science training room. What you see there is some of the outside work, so you're seeing the entrance to the roadway is if you are standing at the Westover Building looking towards Chris. That is the sidewalk that will border the road that connects the two parts of campus. The top left-hand picture is the sidewalk that borders the other side of the parking lot. We're beginning to spread the material in the maintenance yards of fire training field, and as we are meeting, they are actually setting up the fire training burn building. So we've got a crane out today, and they're setting the boxes together. We anticipate within the next thirty days, we'll be all but complete with this project. And I do want to inform the board that sides construction, Billy Heiser and his crew have been absolutely fantastic to work with. Any problem that they have encountered, they have figured out a solution for that was in general revenue neutral. Unexpected things, they have been very, very easy to work with and deal with. This is by far the easiest project. I could not speak highly enough concerning how they are executing the project. It is high-quality work, done at a very reasonable price, and they are pretty fast. So it's as good a project, I think, as we've ever done on campus and better than many, many of them. Moving on, I did want to brief you in on summer enrollment. So as everyone knows, we converted to a completely online schedule for the summer, and I am absolutely ecstatic to tell you that at this point, we are now at flat enrollment for the summer. Not only am I extremely happy about this, I will tell you that I am shocked. A huge amount of this credit goes to the Matthews group for really working the registration process, really chasing down students. Keep in mind that our single largest method for enrolling students has to do with going to the high school and seeing the students or bringing high school students on campus. Neither of those were possible. So they have done a very good job of tracking down students, getting with them. Some of our local school districts have been extremely easy to work with, sharing contact information, and then they've worked the list. And on the academic side of the house, the department chairs have been extremely watchful as to the schedule, making sure that nothing is capped and limiting enrollment, that students have opportunity to take classes and managing that process in a very efficient manner. We actually stand a chance of having an increase in summer enrollment over last year. From a fiscal standpoint, this is not a huge impact. It's definitely helpful. Half of the summer goes to this fiscal year, but summer is by far our smallest enrollment period. But I think what this does give us some hope for is fall enrollment may not be as bad as we had first feared. So we are doing the same process with fall that we have been doing for summer. We are chasing students diligently. It's not one phone call, it's not one email, it's not one contact. It's you chase them till you get them on the phone, and then you keep calling them back to see if they're going to change their mind. And once you get them on the phone, if they want to take classes, you get them in their classes and get them registered then. It's been a very slow, methodical, sometimes very frustrating process. So if you've never worked with trying to register students, here's a common thing that happens. At eight o'clock in the morning, you'll get an application, and that application will have contact information. So let's just say it's nine fifteen by the time that one comes to the top and someone calls the student to get them registered, and the phone's disconnected. Something happened in that hour and a half. It's like, come on, give us a good phone number. So what do we do? We start trying to find them. We start emailing them at their email address. We send them letters at the address that they gave us. We start doing reverse lookup if they gave us an address. It's another thing, if you're not used to how things work now, no one has a home phone anymore. So there's not a phone book of cell phone numbers. It doesn't quite work that way. So in the old days, we would have used a reverse directory, looked up the address, got the home phone number, boom, you're in contact. That just does not work anymore. So it can be a trying process, but if we are persistent, which we have been, you start to see some results from it. So it's a long way to August, and I don't think we'll really know what the enrollment picture looks like until right before the first day of class. But the fact that we've been able to come this far with summer, we're twenty-seven percent as of the last report, which comes out every Monday, down comparative to this time last fall. So we're still in dangerous territory, but we are making up ground, and we're doing it one student at a time. This is an individual process that takes time, takes attention, but we're working the process. Part of what we were doing, and part of what we will continue to do, is we have gone full ahead into fully online programs. This had been a program and a process that we had started a while back. The college since two thousand and ten has been authorized by the accrediting board to offer fully online programs. There were a lot of readiness pieces that needed to be in place. All of the classes needed to be done, they need to be done to a very high standard. We've used the following matters, standard of development to meet that, which is a national, basically a national checklist or a national format of must have these components to these standards. There's a review process that you go through. And we were at the point where in spring, we were going to do a soft rollout of online classes, where we were going to start with a couple of programs and test the water, make sure everything worked. Given the current state of crisis, we put the gas to the floor and moved forward with everything we could. The advantage, if there has been an advantage to having to go through the pandemic and adjust all of our work to remote and all of our fall, spring classes to remote destruction, it's that all of those support systems got tested the hard way. We found out where our gaps were and started filling those gaps. So we are ready to roll this out, and we are putting a marketing campaign behind it to drive student interest in these online programs. I'm going to ask Dr. Melissa Davis and Dr. Stacy Foster, who are the two department chairs who have done the work to get this online. They have managed this process, and they are the reason that we're able to do this. With, of course, a lot of help from others, but they have been the ones that have led this charge on the academic side of the house and interacted with student services to make sure that we had everything we needed. So, Dr. Davis, Dr. Foster, if you will.
I'll start with where we were in February of two thousand and twenty, just to kind of paint a picture. So in February of two thousand and twenty, anything that had to do with online, whether it was courses or programs, was mostly faculty-driven. The faculty member would approach us and say, we think this face-to-face class would do well online, let me develop it. It was at their own pace. They'd worked, like Dr. Payne said, with the distance learning committee to make sure that the quality was there, but they had time to do that. Same thing with their programs. In March of two thousand and twenty, due to the forced remote learning aspect of our campus now, we had to take a different look at that. There was not the time to be taking only classes that we thought were going to be online. We actually forced every class to be online. So the faculty that maybe were a little more hesitant, for example, anatomy physiology, how do you teach anatomy physiology in the classroom, how do you do your labs in the classroom, or, excuse me, online, classroom was just a more favorable way to do it. But those faculty members had to take a look and say, maybe we can do this, we're having to do this now. Same thing with art and music, two subjects that you would not think could be taught online. We're now online. So those faculty members had to take another look at how they taught, what is actually teaching music all about. So we have now experienced all of those subjects and more, where we've seen faculty members completely transition how they teach. So it allowed us to be able to ask them, well, in the future, can we actually offer these classes online? And so that's the big push now. We also had to take a look at how we onboard students. How do we actually place our students into these classes? Before, we had a student come in that didn't have ACT scores, we sent them to the testing center. Now the testing center is no longer available. It has to be remote. So we've accomplished quite a few things, and I'll run through a little list just to catch you up on that. So we had to develop placement testing. So we have a student that comes in, does not have ACT scores. How do we know whether they need a reading class? How do we know whether they need English or math, and what level they're at? So we've had to develop with the help of the faculty, these placement tests. We have one now that we're currently using to onboard new students for reading, English, and math, developed by the faculty members. The students can take this test, and it's more of a guided self-placement. So they are having conversations with the student services staff, but this test allows them to answer a couple of questions. Do you feel comfortable working this algebra problem? Do you feel comfortable reading this certain passage from one of our textbooks on campus? Things like that that help us place students. Our transitional courses for students that just aren't quite ready for the college-level courses, how do we, how do we get those courses where it was always face-to-face to a student that maybe doesn't want to be here in this summer, like we have all of our courses online? So how do we offer those in the summer and still have those students accomplish what they need to be college-ready by fall? So we've had to put all those courses online, and our faculty are actually working on reading, English, and math again, having those courses fully online where students are still having contact with a faculty member, maybe in a synchronous way through Zoom or some other capacity. That way, they still have that faculty contact, but they're not physically in a classroom. So that is being developed as we speak, and we will roll that out on June first for the first time and see how it goes. But by fall, we should have that quality managers approved and moving forward with a very quality product. So we're very excited to see how that goes. Tutoring and Learning Center, if we had a student that had trouble in their courses, we would send them to the Tutoring and Learning Center, where an actual tutor would sit down with them and take a look at the issues. Now, all of that is also remote, so the students are having to Zoom with their tutors now. So we've taken our entire Tutoring and Learning Center online. The orientations campus, all of those courses were always with the students face-to-face with an actual instructor, where they could ask questions and things like that. All of those courses are having to be, like, developed right now, redeveloped, where we have online materials for them to go through, videos to watch, synchronous Zoom sessions with the faculty members, things like that. So we're taking a completely different approach to those as well, and that will start this fall, or, excuse me, this summer, we will do a soft rollout. And then this fall, of course, again, they'll be run through the quality matters process so that we know we still are keeping to our standards. We've had to take a look at the concerns for privacy of our videos, whether we can record those Zoom sessions where the students' faces are actually visible, so we're having to deal with that. We have a committee right now that's looking into how we can possibly migrate to Microsoft String, which is a little bit different software that's free for us because we already use Microsoft. So we have a task force that's supposed to be looking into that, and that would keep us from, that would help us move away from Zoom and into that string environment. We're also having to answer questions about how we will proctor exams. Math, for example, we had a concern about, you know, are the students that are actually in that environment, in that remote environment, the actual students we enrolled in those courses, or is someone else taking that test for them? We've had some issues with whether those students were cheating or not. We just didn't have a way to actually monitor that. So we are looking into proctoring software, where there may actually be a video camera on the student. Even in their own home, their computer would be recording them take that test so that we can maintain quality in our classroom. And I'll let Dr. Foster talk to the specifics.
So it's been happening. But what we're looking at now, and we tried to write things down just because we've done quite a bit, and we mentioned proctoring and all, but what we're looking at now where we're at, Dr. Payne has talked to enrollment for summer. It's all online. We were kind of concerned, what is that going to look like? We're seeing great results. Lot of enrollment at this point is tremendous. When we looked back, though, at spring two thousand and twenty, at one point, we said, oh my goodness, we've just moved everybody online for the rest of the spring semester. How many of them did we lose? What's our concern there? And Dr. Payne had the numbers ran, and it turns out our attrition rate, the number of students that we lost in spring two thousand and twenty over spring two thousand and nineteen and previous semesters is neck and neck, we're right at the same. And so that was good news for us to know that, hey, we went remote, we took them all online, and they're not just leading us in droves. And so that was reassuring news for us. The thing that we're seeing, though, is not only are students preferring these online classes in the summer, but in the fall. And Matthew can probably speak to that as well, right? We're having to watch the schedule on a minute-by-minute basis because our web course offerings are exploding. We've double-packed, we've triple capacity as seats left and right on all of them. So what we're seeing is for the fall semester, students are already moving from the traditional face-to-face classrooms into the online environment. Now, how much of that is because they're fearful of what's going on in the world right now? How much is because that's what they really want? But we're seeing that, hey, they did it in the spring, so now they're thinking, well, I did it in the spring, I can do it in the fall. So we are seeing the students moving in that direction. And we're not turning any student away. So that's why we're watching the schedule very, very closely. As soon as something's closing or going, getting ready to close, we're finding extra faculty capacity and we're opening a new section. Another thing that we've done with moving to online programming, we've opened up our Zoom capabilities. So they're doing Zoom appointments for advising. What we're also doing is we're promoting our programs via Zoom with informational sessions. And that's something they've been a big speed, and your area is kind of heading up, and then Communications is working on it as well, but it's been an interesting way to promote programs virtually. So we've done one for nursing, I think I rolled out the first one, always like to be the getting big. And then we've seen business management now, agriculture and forestry is up for one, paramedic programs up for one. So we're taking, we're reaching out to students virtually as well. So what we have ready for fall two thousand and twenty is we have three programs and our one AA degree with multiple transfer pathways ready to go fully online to fall two thousand and twenty. So we're pretty excited that we're able to sit there. You see the list on your screen right there, the ones that we're moving forward. And what we want to make sure is that, especially for the AA transfer pathways, do they have a route to then complete that remotely at a four-year university? So once they leave us, do they have a pathway that we've outlined for them to continue on? And we have been working on that behind the scenes with our university partners and then other universities within our region. So that's something that we've worked on pretty closely.
So you're saying they could go ahead and continue the four-year program online and not have to go to the school?
That's what we're making sure of, yeah. We're really making sure, especially our associate of arts in teaching, that's something specific to the state of Missouri to transfer on into a four-year university. But we also have our education, our associate of arts education degree. And so we want to make sure that they can continue those on so that they can get their teacher certification. And even if they go to a different state, what's that look like? So we're looking, we're looking at that closely.
Are most of those four-year schools kind of like us, are forced into that now, and they're developing it very quickly, or was that already there?
Well, for our university partners, we already have hacked for most of these to happen, especially our programs, the administration of justice, the teacher education, business administration, those were already defined pathways with our university partners. We're just trying to expand that in certain areas for other ones. And then we're also looking to see, because now that we're going to online programming, we're hoping to pull students who are a little further away. So they may not be university partner students, they may go to a different university somewhere else. So we're looking to see how this is going to go in summer, or a little further away that we've never reached out to before.
So we've started to look at transfer pathways into S I U Carbondale, other schools in Arkansas and surrounding states, so that, once you start going online, you start broadening that geographic area that students are coming from, then the choices are different. The main thing that we're going to push is you can complete your associate of arts degree and pick what you want your future major to be at a university off this list. So that's the transfer pathway idea. And then we've already got you set up with our partners in the university center who have matching online programs, which we know for a fact you can complete without losing any credit. So we've got multiple ways that we can roll this out for students to the students' benefit.
So how's the tuition outside of Jackson District online compared to?
So we actually did some market research on that. There's great variations per state. We're going to be focusing on some particular geographic regions. And part of that decision was our out-of-district tuition is matching those tuition rates, so we are price competitive as well. And we're trying to pick places that don't already have local colleges doing a lot of online programs. So we're trying to reduce the competitive field by picking kind of where we're going to target for these students, and part of the market research is what's the price for it?
But you could be anywhere, as long as you have the university partners that you're going to finish with, you'd be anywhere in the world directly.
Correct, correct. So we will probably pick up, our veteran population and active military population will probably increase as this moves forward. And I've had times in the past, and when I've taught an online class, and I've had a student sitting in the middle of the Mediterranean Ocean on a Navy destroyer, and it's just the same as if they were sitting in the dorm rooms taking the class.
Are you finding any challenges with students that don't have access to high-speed internet? How big a deal is that?
So let me speak to that. We, so Dr. Mary Beth Payne and her institutional effectiveness office created a survey this semester that we sent out to the students that was a little different than a lot of our surveys. A lot of our surveys are picked from this list, rate this particular service, and there's quite a bit of that on the survey. But most of the questions were, tell us about your experience with this. Tell us about your challenges. Tell us how this went. There are some students that responded on that, three hundred and fifty-three students responded in detail to the survey. Of those, there is a small percentage Of those, there is a small percentage that this was a true problem for them. Now, remember, we put Wi-Fi in the parking lot. So if you could get to the parking lot, you could get an internet access. But there were a small number of responses, basically a handful, that said, look, I've got transportation problems, I've got health problems. I, on my income couldn't, I either, two things about equally divided. I can't afford internet access in my house, or I live somewhere you can't get that. But it had to be, the way we had set it up and the way we responded to the crisis, you had to have multiple problems happening simultaneously for that to be a true barrier. So a lot of what we heard was, wow, yeah, I just came up to the parking lot and I get good Wi-Fi there, you know, really strong internet signal and I could do it. We had a couple of students that Payne and we actually issued laptops to because they had let us know, I, I don't have a computer, I can't do this. And then we had other students that said, hey, I did it all on my phone. It was kind of a pain in the butt, but we got it done. That survey gave us a lot of really rich feedback as to what our students were experiencing. And the main thing that I would say we got back from the survey was, this wasn't a lot of fun. We didn't really enjoy having to do this. But we really feel like you did everything you could and we felt very well supported. When you look at the ones that actually used virtual registration, used tutoring, used the virtual services, they were all rated above 90% in most cases. So the, the people here did a good job in taking care of our students. I anticipate there's going to be a number of students that, when it all shakes out, will ask, you know, can I redo that class? Or can I get a wake withdrawal or something like that? That's expected. But quite frankly, right now, everybody has their growth. Very few, very few are looking at it and going, no, I'm going to wipe that semester away. I mean, I, look, maybe a dozen so far, if that didn't have actually filed and said, no, I want to back, I want to back out.
Is, is the college system going to be large enough? Will it have to be upgraded as this expands out?
Our technological infrastructure is robust enough to handle it because we're sending out, there's not a lot coming back. So we've got plenty of bandwidth, we've got a robust system. One of the, and it's hard to believe we would look at it this way, but one of the advantages of having gone through the cyber attack was we hardened and added some robustness to our systems that actually increased capacity. Along with that, we're adding instructional capacity. So we've run a national ad for online faculty, online adjunct, and we're starting to get some interest in that. And those are just in case. So the last thing we want to do is actually be super successful with what we're doing, get a huge surge in enrollment and go, oh yeah, sorry, we've got nobody to teach that class. So we're not going to be in that position. It's pretty incredible. I was, I've always said, there are three reasons that people change. And this applies to institutions as well. You change because you choose to change. You choo, you change because you are coerced to change. Or you change because there's a crisis. And I will tell you, most times institutions and people are coerced to change through crisis. Well, that is where we were at. We went into a crisis as a result of two back-to-back huge shocking events, neither of which we had any control over. But what we've done is we have taken those issues and we have dealt with crises and we have made a better future through what we learned. So six months ago, if you'd have said, can you do remedial developmental online? I would have looked at you and said, not only do I not think you can do that, I don't think you should do that. However, we found some technology that lets you do that. You can't do it like a traditional online class. You can't do remedial developmental education in an asynchronous environment where you throw things out and you think they're going to work independently and succeed at that. It has to be a heavily synchronous, it has to be an electronic classroom. So we had to figure that out because we were forced to go online. And what the faculty did was they went, okay, we're just going to do these video conferences with all these students and we're going to make this work. Be on your computer at such and such a time. It actually will be better in the fall than it was this spring because we couldn't really do a scheduled time effectively during the crisis. And we had to think that through and we had to make choices because that was the original thought process. Your class was at nine o'clock on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I'm going to see you on the computer at nine o'clock on Tuesday and Thursday. Well, the problem was everybody was working from home. And you might have one computer and it may not be available at nine o'clock for all those students. So we've had faculty doing the same lesson three times a week to catch all the students that needed to be caught. Or in many cases, scheduling one-on-one, I will sit here and teach you this because this is the time you can do it. So it, it's been an incredible process and I cannot praise the people that have been involved in this enough. Literally right on the back of a cyber attack. Called an entire, called the entire faculty back the second day they were on campus and went, okay, here's what I think is probably going to happen in the next couple of weeks. I think they're going to force us into being remote. And we've got 70 people in one room whose lives are about to be turned completely upside down. And what you would normally think would happen would be a lot of mashing and complaining and a lot of, oh, woe is me. But let me tell you what happened at our college. 70 people blinked. They kind of processed it for that 30 seconds that you, you got to go, wow, that's big. And they looked right back at me and said, well, if you think this is really going to happen, why are we waiting? We need a plan, we need to just, let's get the students in for the next two days. Let's meet with them all, tell them what's going to happen and let's go. Let's not wait for it to happen to us, let's happen to it. And they left that meeting making plans and moving forward. I've been at five different institutions and I would not bet you the lint in my pocket that it would have happened at any of the other four. We are the most fortunate college that I can think of to have the people that we have working here that just go, all right, let's just do it. When it gets serious, our people get serious. Something minor we would talk about for four and a half hours would probably never come to a present. But, you know, you changed the entire world and it's like, let's get to work. This is too important to be, be best around. You try to define a term, that'll be a five-hour type of sentence. But that's, that's a beautiful thing. And everybody across the college approached it the same way. So, you know, things that we figured out and implemented that will never go away. Virtual advising, that will never go away. Having an open tag where a student can just, hey, anybody there? Let me talk to you about next semester. That's never going to go away. The feedback's too positive. Students are going, oh man, that was great. We, we loved doing that. I didn't have to drive up there to get this done. It's kind of neat when you go into crisis and then you come out of the other side and go, we're way better. We know a lot more than we did. We, we made the absolute best of this and we're growing from it.
Any other questions for Dr. Bates and Foster?
Were you all finished? We totally interrupted you there.
Yeah, we did.
All right, we'll call it finished tonight. All right, good. Thank you.
Those are the two that made it happen, guys.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so part of what we have been doing is the communications crew, two of which are in the room with us today. Oh, Fall Classes, now are we talking about that? I went too fast, didn't I? Okay, there we go. Facebook. So we've been really working on our communication strategy. We have been focusing on press releases, digital communication. And this is the result of concentrated effort and really working it. So we doubled our Facebook engagements, period, period. So I want, want you to look at those numbers of engagements and where we're at. And this is the top 10 list. Everybody there, what's the high one besides us? 11,000? Is that right? 11,000?
Yes, sir.
Check that number out. 41,000 engagements over a week?
Yes, and it's gone up from there.
How do you do that?
Would you care to speak to that?
So one thing we did differently is we, instead of commencement, we, we did a virtual commencement speech from Dr. Payne and we posted photos that people submitted of graduates. And that just, it went viral. And we did a number of posts that just compiled together. The engagement was really, really strong.
So, you know, things that are student-focused, student-centered. We also do a lot of short videos that have to do with alumni and or current students. So we just completed a alumni video that I think is going to be extremely popular. Is it posted yet?
Not yet.
So it'll be posted in the next few days after the person that did it looks at it and goes, yeah, I don't think that's going to be posted. A lot of work is how they did that. They're, they're rocking. And I, I don't know, if you've seen my video, I have not looked at it, so.
I wouldn't.
I, I refuse.
It's one of you riding a horse, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, they can tell you that, right.
That's why I got some wood fire on.
There's a follow-up video with me and the college attorney trimming trees. I already spoke to Fall Classes. We are lagging behind this time, last year. We're still 27% behind, but we are making improvement on that daily. So every week this has gained brain. So two weeks ago, we were 50% behind and now we're 27% behind. So over the next 14 days, as we really start pushing the ad campaign for online programs, I'm hoping to see significant jumps in this. There'll be a little bit of lag as those ads start taking effect. But I think we stand a good chance of not being hurt too bad in enrollment. State appropriations is where our greatest risk, this is still a risk. So I don't want to downplay how much work needs to be done between now and August. But state appropriations is probably our greatest risk now of being a big, big hole. One final thing that I would like to mention before we go into executive session is with us today is Coach Dean Best. So in your packet to be considered when you get personnel is Coach Best's notification of retirement. 1,300 wins, 50 seasons here, 12 years in high school, two national championships, 17 or 19 appearances at the national tournament, double-digit times in the final four. Incredible career. Member of Three Rivers College Athletic Hall of Fame, member of the Missouri Sports Hall of Fame, the Purple Buff Hall of Fame. And in fact, legend stats with the Missouri Sports Hall of Fame. He is an icon of athletics. And I can tell you, he has been the guiding voice and the guiding point for our athletic department for all known members. And I am sad to see Coach make this decision. I'm happy for him. Coach, you have been fantastic to work with. And I think we've done great things in the last six years with the athletic department, our student development process, our competitiveness, our facilities. I think we've had wins across every front. And that's as much of more you than anybody else. And I just can't say enough good things about you. And I hope, of course, that you're still going to be around even though you're not going to be the head coach. The door is always open. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I feel like I'm the blessed one in this group. I come back and I watch you all operate. I hear the good news that's going on and as far as my statistics, I appreciate you mentioning those. I couldn't have written it any better, frankly. I still remember 50 years ago when I came here. And I see a lot of great things going on now, just like I saw back then. I saw a great president, I saw a great board of trustees. Back then, the board of trustees hired H. Tudor Westover and gave us, you know, an extremely wise and good president. And so I appreciate the board and I appreciate the president. And I appreciate you guys equally. I think it's fabulous what I've seen. These two catastrophes, whatever you want to call them, I thought they were handled so well. And I felt for the leadership, but I, I didn't, I wasn't surprised that it was handled well. And, you know, they're talking now about the new normal. I don't know if we'll ever get back to normal. But the new normal is going, we're going to be right there in the middle of all that. So I'm looking forward to continuing to be a part of this great college. And I just wanted you all to know that I appreciate every one of you in here and appreciate the job that you've done. And I wanted, I know that there's always a lot of things that we have to do in the future and I think that will happen. So I thank you very much for helping me do what I've been able to do. Thank you.
All right, Coach, congratulations on your retirement. I suppose we'll have to live with it. I want to say just personally, although I don't attend every basketball game, the Raiders basketball program had a big, big, important part in my life. I think you probably remember my dad was a big fan. My brother was a, a boy and I came to camp. And so memories of Raiders basketball are a big piece of the Weaver family. And so memories of Raiders basketball are a big piece of the Weber family and I just want to thank you for the history you've had of this college.
Thank you.
All right, executive session time. We have a motion.
For those who are going to executive session.
All his favor?
All right. All right.
Okay. The executive session, then. All right. Items for consideration, discussion, and vote, approval of college policies.
Yes, we bring forward today one, two, three, four, five policies, one of which is new and the rest are revisions. I'll start with G A P eleven oh seven. This is actually a replacement policy for G A P eleven oh five, which was inclement weather, which dealt strictly with closures of the college because the weather got bad. Then we learned that you could possibly be closed or have a disruption for an extended period of time for things other than weather. So we reworked that entire policy into disruption in normal college operations, which covers weather closure, acts of God.
Cyber attacks?
Cyber attacks, all sorts of things. And talks about a number of different ways that we would either close or significantly alter college operations for the short term or the long term. So that is a lot of addition to that. Then D P zero three four one, which is the Board Policy on Confidentiality of Student Records. And S P two four one five, which is the College Policy on Confidentiality of Student Records. We found that there was a disagreement between what we had in the catalog and what we had in policy with regard to what items were included as part of directory information. So we have cleaned that up. And then H S P five one one zero is communicable diseases and we wanted to clarify the role of state and local health department guidance in that particular policy. And one new policy is I T P eight two zero four, website privacy, which deals with what data that we do or do not collect from people who interact with us in a virtual environment and what we do and do not do with that particular information. One thing that I want to make clear that's in the policy, we do not collect credit card information. It is a third-party processor. So it actually never resides with us. So it is not possible for your credit card to be compromised here. We only have a machine that connects to someone else. It's that way on purpose. So we ask that you approve those policy additions.
We should approve those as presented.
Then as information items, of course, the associated regulations are in the back of the book.
All right. Roll call vote. Judge T. Hager?
Yes.
Judge T. Shaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Judge T. Williams?
Yes.
Judge T. Ederson?
Yes.
Judge T. Richardson?
Yes.
All right. Consideration of approval of personnel actions and associated documents. Any discussion?
I'm going to approve as a party.
I'll say it.
Roll call vote. Judge T. Hager?
Yes.
Judge T. Shaw?
Yes.
Judge T. Williams?
Yes.
Judge T. Ederson?
Yes.
Judge T. Richardson?
Yes.
All right. O. S. U. Jern?
Salute.
Thank you.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
All his favor say?